All right. My name is Kim Roney. I'm a member of the Weekly Update team on JM Pro. And I wanted to say thank you to Firestorm for hosting us, to members in the audience for joining us on this lovely Sunday afternoon, and to our audience that's viewing online. We have -- we'll have on the phone Ashley McDermott, who is the Sunrise Movement Hub Coordinator for WNC. And here we have at the table with me Blake Esselstyn, who's Principal at Frontwater. Thank you for joining us.
You're welcome.
So we wanted to start today with going a little bit back to the beginning about the history of Asheville districts. After multiple threats to District Asheville City Council elections by members of the North Carolina General Assembly, the council put a non-binding referendum on the 2017 ballot, asking voters if they approved dividing the city into six districts. The referendum showed 75% of voters rejecting the districts, with 11,726 voting against it. Then, in 2018, Representative Chuck Edwards presented Senate Bill 813, which was ratified and became law on June 29, 2018, splitting the city into five districts with one at-large seat. The bill was amended to move the elections from odd-numbered to even-numbered years, which meant that the 2019 election that would be happening this year was moved to 2020. On July 2 of this year, our city council held its first public meeting on the districts after months of closed-session meetings with legal staff. Some council members have offered opinions, concerns, and solutions, while dozens of members of the public also submitted comment, including people at this table. Now, during the panel today, you may hear words, terms, acronyms, and phrases that we can clarify or get more information on that might be new to us. For people in the audience, we've got some pieces of paper here at the table if you wanted to take notes. And for our stream viewers, you can comment on the post on JM Pro's Facebook. We will compile a glossary as soon as possible this week. Blake, thank you for providing some visuals for today's event. Can you take a moment to present and orient our audience?
I'd be happy to. So I'll just say a little bit. Also, I echo, as Kim said, thank you to folks for coming today. And a little bit just about my background and where I'm from and why I know a little bit about this. I am a mapping nerd, professional mapping nerd, and I worked actually as the mapping person for the City of Asheville Planning Department for a little more than 10 years. And so I'm used to looking at maps of the city. And please, if folks have questions about sort of what we're talking about or where we're talking about, but on the screen now, I'll give a just a little bit of an orientation. You might think that this purple outline is a gerrymander district, but that is actually the City of Asheville corporate limits. It's got a distinctive shape, to be certain. And just to orient people, and I'll tell you what, I'm going to turn off the districts just to make some of the other features here clear, and I'm going to turn on the labels. So this is 240. And the French Broad kind of runs down through here. And the basic, you know, we have downtown, North Asheville, East Asheville, West Asheville, South Asheville, not surprisingly, but for example, Oteen is out here. This protrusion here is Hawk Creek, Beaver Dam, North Asheville, Shiloh is here, this is Biltmore Park, Arden, Skyland, Anka Candler out here, West Asheville, Emma, Downtown, Southside, East End Valley Street. So that's just sort of an orientation. And then the districts, as they were imposed, look like this. So you can see, we could, well, we'll talk about this more, but I think that's a basic orientation. You can see there are roughly districts that represent center, north, east, west, and south, but one could argue about how well those are designed to cover those areas.
Thank you so much. We're going to present a series of starter questions today, and I've invited our viewers to submit questions online via the comments on the stream. We ask our panelists to keep answers short and tied to the current state of voter access, unless the question is in regard to how the public can engage and change. So let's start with a couple for you, Blake. What are the reasons generally given for districts versus an at-large system? That's generally speaking.
It's a good question. There are a few reasons that people argue in favor of these, and they tend to be more recommended for larger municipalities. I remember a political scientist at UNC Asheville once said that 100,000 people, population of 100,000, is about a threshold where cities, it makes sense to consider. And obviously, folks may quibble with that threshold, that figure, but it gives folks the argument, one argument is that it gives people a local representative. If they want to call somebody about some issue they're having in their neighborhood, they know that there is one person who is specifically focused on that neighborhood that they can call. In many cases, districting has actually been imposed or has been chosen by the local population to encourage minority representation. That's true in a number of places in North Carolina. That has been one argument for certain. And the other is, and this is one of the ones that was provided as a justification for this legislation, is that you will have a representative who is from, at least the way that the Asheville districts are structured, you would have a representative that is from each area of the city. For years, for example, in Asheville, there was concern that too many of the city council members lived in North Asheville. So having a districted system like this, where the representative has to live in their district, provides some certainty that there would be people from each area of the city.
So what are some of the arguments for and against a districted or hybrid system here in Asheville city limits?
I think a lot of, some of the arguments that I've heard, and I'd be curious to hear about if there are other folks in the audience or online who would propose others, but the idea that there's not factionalism. One of the concerns about districted systems is that you'd have sort of people having their own turf and competition, or people being divided, and not considering the whole city, just focusing on what their more parochial local district interest is, rather than thinking about the whole city's concerns. And another argument is that people, a lot of people are happy with the representation they have now. Certainly, one argument against the, this particular statute, and there may be another question about this, is the way that the districts were imposed. It was not done as something that was requested by a majority of the people.
All right. So it looks like we have a question from the audience.
So you mentioned about other reasons people might oppose district systems in due here. In addition, though, that these bills came up after the 2015-17 elections, which saw conservative fortunes kind of decline locally. And I was wondering if it's possible to kind of go into a little bit of that, that these came up when councils started to become a little less conservative and definitely less white, and that's when the pressure for this at the state level really grew.
Sure. I think that we could definitely provide some links to some more backstory along the timeline. And I know that one of the other reasons brought up to oppose is that Asheville's history of redlining has separated the city, issues with our school board, having a different district that doesn't match the city. I know you've written about that as well. So we can definitely follow up with some more history and timeline. Could you have some answers for that?
And I was curious, so I know that Joel Burgess, a local journalist at the Asheville Citizen Times, had done some, this chart that I made, which is up on the screen, is based on an article that he wrote. And it shows representation on city councils since a little after World War II, 1953. And basically, this is showing, and these are, the colors are similar to colors that I have on a map from the University of Virginia that we could look at as well, but basically showing that, starting in 1969 was when the first black council member was elected, and then for majority of the last, so 1969 was 50 years ago. And over that 50 years, typically, there has been one black representative. There was a period in the early '90s with two, and then now, you can see there are two plus an Asian-American. These symbols here show when the, excuse me, when the mayor was African-American. And I believe that there was a draft bill introduced in 2013.
It wasn't introduced. It was floated, represented him off at the time, floated around, proposed, it was never formally introduced.
That's right.
Actually covered that issue back then, you know?
That's right.
Thank you. Any other questions about maps?
Yeah, with the proposed districts here, do you know, happen to know where our current council lives within those?
Yeah, we can. We can go to there. So I guess we could go to, as things currently stand, will voters be able to vote for a majority of council members? I know that's come up a lot recently with contentious split votes. The way that I'm reading it with the four types of municipal elections that are allowed in the state of North Carolina, there's the one that's partisan, and then the three nonpartisan, which Asheville's currently nonpartisan. But the way that I'm reading it is that Asheville is not eligible for a primary because of the early voting that begins in October and even years.
And I believe that's correct. We have an election specialist here in the audience who is nodding his head, but that's my understanding as well. And thank you for your patience. On the screen now, this map shows the location of the incumbents, and they're maybe a little hard to see. There are these stars here. So this would be Mayfield, Haynes, Young, Whistler, Smith, and Kapoor. And I can zoom in a little bit more on the area where those are, if it makes those stars a little easier to see.
So that has been part of the conversation. What kind of, when you're looking at drawing maps, what kind of considerations should be given to where incumbent council members live?
That is a fantastic question, and it's one that, I mean, perhaps folks have heard the cliche about having a system where voters choose their representatives instead of the other way around. And in many cases, this is one of the big questions I have. It's a question that I think is fair to raise here, but we don't have any answers. And it's a question that I think folks should be asking city council about, if the districts persist, what will the process be for redrawing them? Because they will certainly be redrawn after the new census numbers come out in 2021. And the typical tendency is, if it's the politicians who are drawing the boundaries, they're going to draw boundaries that will maximize their chances of getting reelected. Unless they know they're, you know, they're serving their final term, or they've got some, maybe they're more altruistic than that. But history has shown, and North Carolina legislative maps are certainly an example of this, that the tendency is, if the politicians are doing this in a back room somewhere, that one of the major agendas is self-preservation.
Right. And that's where we get into gerrymandering, where it's not gerrymandered, maybe, at this moment, that we're using old information, that it opens us up to gerrymandering in perpetuity, unless there's an independent body drawing the maps.
And
So how does a member of the public, when 2021 comes around and they are going to be redrawn, they're going to be, lines are going to be redrawn forever, how does a member of the public engage in that process to ensure access to their vote?
I guess my first response to that is, what will the process look like? I mean, in many places, the folks work behind the scenes. Maybe the elected officials ask their staffs to draw a map, and then they just present that. And maybe they, you know, talk about having public engagement and have a chance for people to give feedback or input. But California is an example of a situation where they have an independent commission, have a multitude of meetings where people can present their own maps. And these meetings happen before the first draft is drawn. That, I think, would be the ideal situation, where folks can weigh in. One of the considerations that people talk a lot about is communities of interest, and where communities of interest are. What does it make sense to keep intact? What is it, where are logical sort of dividing lines? Where would it make sense? And we haven't talked about this specifically, but there is the constraint that the districts have to have equal populations or within plus or minus 5%. So that does limit, that's one, that's the significant, the most significant legal criteria that has to be met in a situation like this. But beyond that, different places have very different processes. And I would hope, in the City of Asheville, that there will be a process that will allow for input before drafts start being made and give folks a chance to weigh in. Because well-intentioned, well-informed people may very much disagree on what they think the best maps are. And the process in California had a lot of back-and-forth discussion and conversation between the people drawing the maps and the citizens who they would affect.
So North Carolina's infamous for drawing maps that favor politicians choosing their voters, not voters choosing their representatives. I've heard the argument that, why is the General Assembly rushing this? And I think for me, the big thing is, it's obvious that they're rushing this before the census. When is the soonest that we could expect census data so that these maps could be drawn in the favor of the voters?
The data typically come out, the streamlined data specifically for redistricting, because this is no longer the case in Asheville, but many municipalities or other local governments, or for example, the state of Virginia, has legislative elections in odd-numbered years. So they put out the bare minimum head count, race, voting age data. There's some, a streamlined package of data usually comes out in the neighborhood of April
So I think for those of us in the room and those of us watching online, we can acknowledge that a lot has changed in Asheville since 2010. So people being pushed out, people, a lot of new people coming in. I know the city has grown a lot. So when does Asheville City Council district system meet the definition of a gerrymander? So I know that's the question about, is this gerrymandering or not?
That's a good question. And one of the interesting things about gerrymandering as an issue is, there's not one universally-accepted definition of what a gerrymander is. Some folks, I won't go through a lot of them, but there's one that I like, which is from, where it's a, I'll be paraphrasing one, that I heard from a law professor in California, who says it is districts that are typically drawn to, and I'm going to get this close to right, basically, districts that are perceived as having been drawn unfairly. And unfair can mean different things to different people. That can also, there's racial gerrymandering, as well as partisan gerrymandering. And so, but typically, I think what a lot of people think of is a situation where folks have drawn the map to benefit either one group or one party.
So I've been trying to think of like a real-time, recent example of a decision that was a split council vote. One could be, let's say, the Flatiron Building, which was a 4-3 vote. So whether you agree with that decision or not, I feel like that's a really helpful example in showing people that they can't vote for all the people that make these split-vote decisions. So right now, I live in District 2, which means I can only vote for the mayor, the new at-large seat, and my representative in District 2. One of the actions that council has an opportunity to do to change the current mapping system is to amend a city charter. But does that mean that we get to return to the previous election process?
My understanding is that that's the best-case scenario. For folks who are advocating for that, their hope is, in a best-case scenario, yes, that if the city charter were redrawn, to have that as, in the language, that yes, it would return to the previous arrangement.
And does, my understanding is that council doesn't have the choice to change the year of the election. Only the General Assembly would have that option. Is that how you're seeing that as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Question.
Yeah.
But to clarify, council could undo the whole district system through city charter change. They wouldn't have to just do a different district system. They could say, we're going back to the old at-large system. Correct?
But not the odd-numbered year?
Not the year.
Right.
Correct.
Okay. Got those.
And just so folks understand, one thing about a charter amendment is that the city council could do that, but it would not be hard for the General Assembly to turn around and say, and essentially undo what the city did with that amendment. So it's not a cure or a reversal that would necessarily have any lasting effect.
And the council could do it again until the General Assembly stopped it.
Right.
Yeah.
How do they change the charter? Is it like a simple majority, the council will vote on it?
My understanding, they have to have a majority, but they also have to have three public meetings on the matter. We've been watching for the past about 18 months as this has gone back and forth. So yeah, that's my understanding. They have to have three public meetings, and they have to have a majority of the votes to do it. I guess one of the things that's coming up for me is that the city council did hold that public meeting in July, and there was a time for public comment. It was the week of July 4, so a lot of folks complained that they were out of town. So the question I've been hearing a lot from folks is, what does a person do to contact public officials and let them know about their concerns, or to offer suggestions? My suggestion was to email the entire council, which is ashvillencouncil@ashvillenc.gov, and we'll definitely be posting a link to that, so you can contact our council directly.
Would you want to, I think various council members also have specified what their position is as far as challenging or a different compromise, or that kind of thing?
Right.
If you want to.
Sure, we can dig into that. I know that Councilman Haynes, Young, and Councilwoman Smith have put out an open op-ed to the Citizen Times. Councilwoman Kapoor has put out a suggestion to add two new seats. And that at the TDA meeting, Councilwoman Mayfield insinuated they may have four votes to amend the charter. That's all I have right now, unless other people have other information.
The mayor said that there's a weak legal case, but she's not definitively said whether the city will fight or will modify the charter.
That's true. Thank you for adding that.
And I realize, maybe, Kim, I didn't fully answer your question about whether the situation in Asheville constitutes a gerrymander. I talked a little bit about a definition of gerrymandering. So I would certainly argue that a lot of folks would be justified in saying that it is unfair in that the method that the General Assembly used to impose districts against the, what was shown in the referendum, what the will that was shown in the referendum, as well as the local delegation to the General Assembly, as well as local elected officials. To me, that does not seem like a fair way of dealing with a local versus state government relationship. As far as the way that the districts are drawn, I have definitely heard people say that they feel there's a racial gerrymander. It is not what I would say is a textbook racial gerrymander, which often includes packing as well as cracking. There have been racial gerrymanders that are solely cracking, but we can talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, go ahead and dig in on that. Because I know that the neighbors that I talked to recognize that when you have a specific issue that's addressing one neighborhood group more than the others, there's an opportunity to come together, whether it's around human and civil rights or environmental issues. But that's going to be impossible to maybe do at this district level.
So what I would say that
Just one at-large seat.
Textbook method for racial gerrymandering is the kind of racial gerrymandering that the General Assembly did with the legislative districts in the House and Senate. It was found to be unconstitutional. And that's a situation where they packed essentially, and this was the, you may have heard about the court decision where it was characterized as having been done with surgical precision. And so this actually happened with congressional districts, I should say, as well as the House, Senate, the State House and State Senate districts, where African-American voters were squeezed into as few districts as possible, which meant that, two things, that their influence was diluted across the remaining districts, but also by creating these districts, they created districts where Democrats would win by a landslide. And then that meant that there were fewer Democratic voters in the other districts as well, so it gave the Republicans an advantage. That was struck down as a racial gerrymander, but people observed that it had partisan consequences, to be sure, as well. In, based on the 2010 census, the African-American population in Asheville is about 12 and a half, or 12.3%, I think, roughly one-eighth. So it's, it's hard. I actually have, and I can bring it up on the screen here. I created just sort of a scenario to see what it would look like if someone did a racial gerrymander in Asheville. And this is an extreme case, but basically, District 1 here, and let me see if I, I'll bring this up as a slideshow, so it'll be a little bigger. There we go. So what I tried to do here in drawing this was to bring into District 1 as many precincts, or actually, I'm sorry, this is based on census blocks, so as many blocks as possible with higher percentages of, and the BVAP is the Black Voting Age Population. So this is Shiloh, this is kind of Southside, East End Valley Street, parts of Monford, parts of West Asheville. And in doing this, was able to get the Black Voting Age Population in District 1 up to The remaining districts also look wacky and convoluted, because what I tried to do here, and this is what has been done in some other situations, is to reduce the BVAP in all these other districts to as low as possible, to around 7%. So to take those numbers, and I want to maybe clarify, this was done for another voter education project where I was asked to do this. This is not something I did because I thought it was an appropriate thing to do, but just to show what an extreme racial gerrymander could look like, where this would, and I should point out as well, that this was done in 2017, when what was under consideration was a six-district plan.
And we can post the link to that conversation on the comments to this one as well.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be great. That was before the election in 2017, or before the referendum, I should say.
Right. So this kind of conversation, because the precision cuts were done by the same General Assembly who did Asheville's districts, that might be why we're hearing from people the lack of trust from the state that is known for gerrymandering has set up our districts.
For sure, for sure. And there is, the skepticism is understandable.
Can you interject a quick?
Yeah.
Because I'm not fully understanding, but
Okay.
Can I question you? We get a 75% voter. And is that just thrown out now? Is there recourse as far as saying, no, we're not gerrymandering the city?
One of the arguments that I've heard about that is that the referendum, first of all, is non-binding, and second of all, mentions six districts. This was five with one at-large. So I know that's one of the reasons why it is not thrown out. I think the people that I voted with in that 75% would agree that we don't want the districts because we don't want gerrymandering. However, that is one of the arguments that I've heard. David?
One of the things interesting about the map that was just showed, about what the precision racial gerrymander looked like, is that due to the history of redlining Asheville's geography, rather than black communities being concentrated in one area of the city, they're split over several different areas. And under a large system, if members of those communities feel that some candidates represent their interests, they can all vote for all those seats.
Right.
And that even imposing this kind of very strict district system, where people can only vote in one district where they can't ask to live, that itself seems to break up black voting power.
So one of the things I really wanted to see able to do today is talk about someone that's a new voter, a first-time voter, a first-time voting in Asheville City Council elections. What is their ballot going to look like? So in addition to federal and state elections, you're also going to have county elections and city elections. The city council elections, they're, to my understanding, because we won't have a primary, we also won't have a percentage required to win the district. So we're going to potentially have a very long list of what would look like a primary ballot at the end of our November ballot. It could even end up on the back of the page, as well as potential referendums and things like that. So this is why I think it's really important for us to get that information out to the public. I'm really thankful that you're here to help. I'm really thankful that you're here to help us understand that better. But I'd really encourage the people in the room, and the people who are listening and watching online, just to think about, anytime that you've gone to the ballot box with any like concerns, or felt like out of the loop, this is where it's going to be really important to look up your voter registration, to understand where you need to go, to vote early and often, or as soon as you can, and to look at, look at the ballot before you go. I think that that's a really helpful tool that the State Board of Election provides, and that's through the North Carolina State Board of Election, which we will definitely link to in the comments of this post. So given that there's no action at this point, we're going to see, at the 2020 election, District 1, District 2, and at-large, and perhaps a referendum. That is the law of the land, unless our council takes action. So I think this is a good time to open up the floor officially for audience questions. Did y'all have anything that we didn't open up?
I did want to say one more thing on the racial gerrymandering topic.
Oh, yes, thank you.
So I, I think multiple journalists have referenced the fact that in recent elections, these six precincts that are visible on the screen, shown in yellow, were the districts that performed the best for the black candidates, or specifically, the black candidates who won. That would be Councilwoman Smith and, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Smith and Councilman Young. And folks have observed that these, these six precincts are not all in the same district, in the proposed districts. So, and again, just to, this is, this is Monford, this is sort of the west side of downtown, West End Klingman, this is the east side of downtown, and East End Valley Street, South Side, north part of Shiloh, south part of Shiloh. And, and I think some folks may argue that it would make sense to try and include all of these in a single district. I have not run the numbers to see what that, if one were to total up all the, all the parts. And you can see also that part of these precincts actually extend outside city limits. So that's, that's something to consider as well, that not all of each of these precincts is in the corporate limits. So folks out here would not be able to vote in the city elections.
I haven't yet looked to see if there is a municipality in the state of North Carolina that does this, but it looked like something that could be done because the state, or the Board of Elections does it, or sorry, Board of Education does it, that you could have neighborhood representatives in the district, but the city would vote for them at-large.
Yep.
So you would essentially vote for three people every time, minimum, if you have the mayor, it would be four. But you would vote for the people making decisions on your tax use and policy at-large.
Yep. And this is a list, again, on the screen here, this may be a little too small for folks to see, but this is a database from the UNC School of Government. And this is, I just brought up, I selected for the cities with populations between 50,000 and 150,000. And that, what you're describing is called a district-at-large system. And Gastonia has a district-at-large, and Concord has a hybrid of at-large and district-at-large. And I think some of the larger, larger-population cities may use that as well. But this is, this is a nice resource at the UNC School of Government.
That's the one argument that I haven't heard come from our council as an option. And I don't, I don't want to give out like misinformation, but I, I don't even, does that require a charter amendment, would be the question?
It would require something to be, or the legislation would have to be amended. But that would address, if the concern, as some legislators have stated, was that someone from South Asheville has typically not been on council until, that changed recently, but, or that there have been too few people from East Asheville, that system where the representative has to live in the district, but they're voted on by everybody, could address that concern. Some people would argue that it makes more sense if they're only representing the people in that area. But I think one thing that I've learned is that there is, there is no one perfect voting system. There's a math professor at UNC Asheville who teaches a semester course on voting theory. And it's, it can get very complicated, and different countries have very different systems. If you're looking at ranked choice voting, or proportional representation, there's so many different ways to do it. And as I, as I mentioned before, people with similar political leanings can disagree, for sure.
And I know Asheville has a very unique history. A piece that was in the Asheville Blade about Asheville's redlining situation gives an example of why not every system that might work for other cities would work for ours. We have a unique history to wrestle with. Do you have other questions?
Yeah, one thing about the historically voter turnout in Nashville elections, also been very, very low, in local elections at least, that started to shift last election. And so one point I've heard basically about how this new system relates to black voting power is that it splits up even areas that hasn't been a huge turnout before, that do have a black voting population, and if turnout continues to increase, it's cutting off the potential that a candidate could rally voters in those areas and then have a break showing.
Thank you for adding that. Anything else?
Legal cases? Because like, these, similar bills have been pushing for Eatsburg and Wake County, and they actually got thrown out. And so I just, might we repeat a little more about what the debate over whether this issue should be filed lawsuit, in addition to or instead of a charter change?
Right. So with this information session being about like our current situation, I think that we can definitely post what the city attorney presented, because I got into the numbers of like what those legal ballot options were and could cost. I'm not going to pretend to do all of that from the perspective of an attorney, because I am not one. But I think it would be a helpful resource for voters. And if anyone in the room hasn't seen the city attorney's presentation on the options for a legal case, I would highly recommend it.
People can certainly contact council members and say, hey, you should change your charter and file a lawsuit on this. So if people want to.
Anything else? All right. So once again, we will not have an election this year here in the city of Asheville. We will see a very different process in 2020, which is why it's so important for voters, first-time voters, first time in Asheville, and everyone, because it's going to be a totally new process for us, it's going to affect our everyday lives, our school funding, our ability to protect our water, policymaking, budget spending. This is a great time to go ahead and check your voter registration now, to make sure you're registered. There are going to be new issues with voter ID, which are required in North Carolina starting in 2020. And I found it really easy to go to the Buncombe County Board of Elections and do voter information, and look up my ballot or my information. So it shows me what district that I'm in and where I'm going to vote. We will link to all of that information in the comments here. And once again, I just wanted to say thanks to Blake, and hopefully we'll get to hear some comments from Ashley from Sunrise soon. We weren't able to get her in today. But thank you to Firestorm for having us, and thank you to all of you for being here today.